Tax law?
Yes.
That's if it goes into upset or if it goes into upset sale, it could go judicially, not repository.
Okay, we can have roll call, please.
Not in, not repository.
Mr. Griffith? Mr. Griffith?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
He's here.
Ms. South?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Radel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman? Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Boe?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
You know, Mr. Haas and Ms. Sedman are here.
Ms. Sedman left.
Ms. Sedman went home ill, I think.
Oh, did she? Mr. Haas, we're here. And Ms. Sedman is absent.
Yep.
Okay, we have 10 present.
Okay. Motion adopt the work agenda. The number eight and nine have been dealt with, and we've added number four regarding the repository properties. We have a motion.
So moved.
Boe, you have second?
Second.
Ms. McDermott, all favor indicate by saying aye.
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 In the opposition, they have sentences done heard, most prepared. Mr. Swets?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your packet are the January budget reports. As in prior years, January has not very much activity because of the fact that basically what's in here is just what went through the system. We're working on closing 2019, which we did on the 14th. We're also working on getting the audit ready, and we have some things we have to get the auditors at the end of this week. So, really, there's not a lot of activity in January. The one thing that is in January that does tie into the council questions was you will see on page, I had it giving you one second here, it's on debt service, so it's agenda page 52 of 178. The tax anticipation note slash temporary loan, that has the $58,000, and that ties into the $16 million tran question that was asked. So, when we did the $16 million tran, there's $58,000 in charges, that's where they are. The $15 million's on the balance sheet, you know, that's the cash that was received, and the $16 million loan that will be paid back in June. I also put in there that obviously when we get the interest bill, which we always get on around the 30th, it depends on if it's a weekend or not, that will be paid at that time, and will also hit the expense line. Retirement and some of those other things, we get reimbursed quarterly, so because it's so early in the year, we don't have that. We don't have any tax revenue because the tax bills obviously didn't go out. They went out on February 18th, so in January, there was no tax revenue. There's really not a lot on the actual reports themselves. The cash balances are in there. The other question that was asked was about the, the vehicle money, and at the time the budget was prepared, so we're putting this budget together, and we come to council on October 15th. We obviously do the work before this, and at that time, the legislation we had, and the legislation that was passed was it was the Act 89 Fund. So, our, you know, administration was going to put $2 million for the $5 fee in expense reimbursements and general construction contracts for the Act 89 Fund. Later on, when the money was physically received, and there was a move towards being more transparent, that's when a new fund was created, the Fund 210 in New World. It was clearly named cash $5 fee, so everybody could see where the $5 fee was kept. So, it was just the difference between the budget and the actual, because again, we didn't receive the money yet, and at the time we put together the budget, that's where the money was budgeted to go.
And I think Mr. Griffith had a question about $34 million bond.
Sure.
Mr. Griffith?
Yep. Yeah, so where, so where's that in the New World system?
So, the $34 million came in on November 26th. We paid off $12.2 million of bonds, so we actually got $21 million of cash.
Where was it receipted in New World?
I will get, I will give you the account numbers.
Okay.
I'll email them to all the council, but I, I will get that and email it back.
Yeah, that was one of the-
Instead of giving you an account, that may be incorrect.
Yeah, that's mine. That was one of the questions that Stephen and I asked three weeks ago.
I will add it.
Okay.
Okay, questions? Urban?
The other question I had was regarding that $5 fee. When I was in New World looking at it initially from last year, it looked like it was brought in under Special Reserve 12, under grants, instead of a fee, and then it went out under special, like, I think, special funds or whatever, and then out as non-personnel costs. Can you explain why that was created that way?
Sure, so-
And not segregated?
Sure, so, as I said, so the actual budgeting for it was in the 207 Fund. When this money was received, it was marked as a transfer, so you'd see it in a transfer fund. It's no different than when we took a Act 13 Marcella Sale in council, and we agreed with it, wanted a separate fund for it, and it was in the general fund. So, anytime you take money from one fund to another fund, you'll see it as an expense to transfer out, and then you'll see it as a transfer in on the new fund. So, on, so on the fund that it was in, you would see a transfer out, and then you would see a transfer in on the new fund. I don't have New World in front of me, I'm sure you do, but I, I can give you and Mr. Griffith the exact accounts when I have New World in front of me.
Other questions for Mr. Swets?
Just my question, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I want to ask the manager, but just to add a respect to hold off till the work session. So, Brian, can you tell us where we at with debt service exactly at this point in time? My feeling, I think we're hovering around 300 million, but probably a little less than that.
Correct.
The new bond that we just took out?
Yeah, so with, with principal and interest at the end of last year, it's a little bit less than 280 million. But that's principal and interest.
But that's what the new bond was taken out as well. Oh, okay, I was under the impression it was a little more than that. Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Griffin?
Yeah, what, what's the status of the gentleman that we contracted to, to take care of the issues with the last year's audit?
Uh, Mr. Lipton?
Yes.
We should be getting a report very shortly from Mr. Lipton. We wanted to get everything, he sat, met with division heads, he met with department heads, I followed up, and we should be receiving a report shortly. I hope to have it by the end of this month, or if I have it for the next meeting. But once, once we get a report from him, it will be shared.
And also, you said that you budgeted the money for the 210 money in the Act 89 Bridge Fund, which is 207?
Correct.
So, why would we budget that in there when you were approved in May for the 210 Fund? Why would, why would it be budgeted in Act 89?
Because remember-
Why would we not make a budget for the 210 Fund when we know the money's coming in?
Sure, so it, so at the time the budget was prepared in 2019, there was no 210 Fund.
Right.
This wa, this wasn't done until the first payment came in, so it was moved after the fact. And it was moved after the fact, again, similar to the, to the Marcella Sale money, because we want it, we agreed with everyone, that it should be transparent. So, it was transferred and put in a separate fund, a new fund was created, and you could see the path, and as I said, I'll give Mr. Urban and all of council the, the-
So, was there a 2, there was no 210 Fund in the proposed budget in October, correct?
There was no 210 Fund at the time the budget books were prepared. You are correct.
In, in 2019?
In 2019.
So, but in 20, no, 2018, excuse me.
No, in 2019, going into 2020.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So, October 15th budget of last year, there was no 210 Fund budgeted?
Was in the, correct.
Why?
It was budgeted to be received in the 207 Fund because the legislation on the top says Act 89 Fund. If you read the legislation, I know you have a copy, but it's six or seven pages from Penda, it says Act 89 Fund. So, budget in the Act 89 Fund. Again, in the interest of transparency, after we received it, and because there were questions from council, the public, and the administration agreed, we said, let's put this in a separate fund, so everyone could see all the money that comes in, and all the money that's spent.
Now, the legislation said it was supposed to be budgeted in a separate account.
The legislation said it was Act 89 money, so that's where it was budgeted.
Okay, so, so that's why we didn't, that was my question, is why do we not budget it in October when we knew the money was coming in next year, and we clearly knew it was supposed to be budgeted in 210, because the legislation says any money received has to be in a separate account?
It was budgeted, it was budgeted in 207, and it was moved.
So, we only have $4,000 left in that fund?
Let me look at the report, please.
Yep, 4256.44.
Forty-two.
That's what's in the 210 Fund.
Sure, let me look one. One second, I'll get it for you. It was 24,000, I believe, at the end of the year, so there may have been some. Yeah, so there, there had to be some payments in January, because at the end of the year, there was $24,000. And in Jan, on January 31st, it was 4,256. Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
One more thing, if you want an updated amount, it's actually 220168, they're waiting for one to reconcile.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Number two, discussion regarding resolution authorizing county manager to execute the lease agreement between Luzerne County and Yon Conde Enterprises LLC for the cafeteria space in Luzerne County Courthouse. Mr. Pedder?
We have a cafe here in the courthouse that was completed, a lease was up for Tina's Cafe, our previous renter. We put an RFP out, we received one proposal for that, our current vendor did not put in a proposal for it. This proposal is before you. It's the same amount of rent that Ms. Mantion is, Tina's Cafe is currently paying now, and it's for your review.
Questions? Thank you. Moving down to number three, discussion regarding ordinance permitting the Luzerne County zoning map to rezone three parcels of property totaling 2.83 acres in Ross Township for mixed zoning districts, B3, S1, and A1 zones, the highway business district, B3 zone.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to defer to Mr., Mr. O'Neil on this one. Is Mr. Eddy present? He's usually here for these.
No, Mr. Eddy's not present. I don't have the details, I apologize. I'm not sure what the trade is, I'll have to find out. I do not have all the details on this.
Well, okay, according to the agenda, it's a middle, this is a property, everybody has read it.
Let's wait till Mr. Eddy can come and go through the process and explain it to us. So, I'll be back on the, the work session for next meeting. Number four, discussion regarding resolution into a lease for a portion of land in Luzerne County Annex for use by the Flower Tent.
Sure, before county council has a resolution, we received another request from the Flower Tent individuals. These individuals leased from us twice last year. It is a county-owned property in 44. They are seeking the fee of $3,350 to lease this space in question from April 1st, 2020 to June 25th, 2020.
Thank you.
Have a question?
Ms. McDermott? You want to comment on that?
Yes, about the fee?
The fee for the Flower Tent?
Yeah, because in spring of 2019, they had paid $3,072 days, which came out to 4,167 per day. Then, fall of 2019, for 56 days, they paid $2,500, which was $44.64 per day. So, now they're proposing to pay $3,500 for 86 days, which comes out to $40.70 per day. So, I would say we can make a, possibly request that fee of 4,464 to try to get that higher amount.
We'll reach out to the, to the owner for 4,464.
Well, Mr. Ancilio is here.
Yes.
He's, are you the owner, Mr. Ancilio?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
One of. Myself and my brother.
Okay.
Basically, what happened this year, the reason for the longer days, is we cannot control when Easter is. So, because Easter is actually April 12th, whereas last year, it was the end of April, that is where your extra time is in there. We actually raised the rent from last year, which was 3,000, to 3,500 because of that extra time for this year, which is why we did that.
But you can see that the per-day fee is less than what you paid last year when you had the other lease agreement.
I understand that. We generally try to do a flat fee for the year, not a per-day fee, which is how all our other leases are done, is pretty much everybody else, we pay them the same rate every year, irregardless of the days. Because most people understand, I'd be, you know, happy to work something, but like I said, I already did raise it for this year, the extra bit, you know?
And also, Mr. O'Neil, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we put a clause into the fee, into the lease agreement last year?
If we go over-
They ran past a certain time, the, they paid additional fee?
Yes, yes.
There was a clause in there, yes.
Yeah. I forget the amount, I think it was like 40 or 50 dollars.
Yeah, I think it was 50, but I'm not, I'd have to look at last year's contract.
I'll make sure that's included in this, in the draft release in preparation for the county party.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Griffith?
Thanks, Leanne, that's exactly what I have written down here, so she's reading my, reading my script here, I think. Great idea. But I think we obviously should raise that to 4,464 per day. I don't think we should go down on our cost for the, for the facility, considering now we have to pay a stormwater fee on that property. We have to pay a stormwater fee for the airport, of which we're not getting any reimbursement from, for anybody, and in the future, I hope to get possibly the magistrate's office to reimburse the county for that, as well as the shared ride people to get reimbursed for. The county taxpayers should not pay the stormwater fee for those properties, but we have tenants on that property. So, at, at the rate that we're charging for the Flower Tent, we're actually losing money based on the stormwater fee, we have to pay for that amount of square footage for that property. So, I mean, I appreciate the fact that we're actually getting some revenue from it. I think that's, that's important, to get some revenue for the county, but I think we need to look at that when we drop leases with people in the county, to make sure that we get enough money in our lease agreements to cover our expenses at least. And the stormwater fee is a huge expense for this county, and I think it's, we need to factor that into all leases, lease agreements. And I did, I did a search, and Mr. Ancilio, there's a school property tax that's owed on another property that you have for a Flower Tent? Is that, has that been resolved in Wilkes-Barre Township?
As far as I know, they're paid.
Okay.
I can check into that, as far as I know, they are paid.
Yeah, the last, last report for Northeast Revenue as of today says there's $2,900 owed for school taxes. So, you may have paid it, they may not update it, just-
Yeah, everything, as far as I'm aware of, is paid.
Okay. That's all I, that's the only question I have on, on the lease, if we can make that adjustment, they'll get a affirmative-
Any other questions for Mr. Ancilio while he's there at the podium?
If you guys wanted to submit that, you know, to me, and then I can just rework the lease, and, you know, if you wanted to come to some agreement in between, even go to the $42 from last year, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, but the lease agreement will come from the Office of Law, I think.
Actually, we did the lease for last year.
Okay, but it'll have to be reviewed by Office of Law.
Right.
And, Mr. O'Neil, you'll make sure the provisions are the same as last year?
Yes.
Okay. It'll be on the voting session for two weeks from tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five, six, and seven are the items that were spoken about in executive session, and they will be on the voting session two weeks from this evening. We move the repository properties over to the work session. Mr. Haas?
Yes, sir. I didn't know this, but some folks approached me at the, at the break, I'm just gonna send those pictures down. Bobby, want to pass those? I guess we're going to be here. Two things, I know there's issues with some of these, but it looks like the vast majority of these things, nobody had an issue with, and I know I've, I've brought these up before in the past. We want to make sure that we get the, the write-off from the municipality, as well as the school district, and I think we can maybe look at that and make sure that that's locked down. But the, the one that's coming out to you is, it's cut off here for the bid amount, it is the property in Newport Township, it's four up from the bottom, that 161 Brown.
It's a half double.
And the folks that are interested in mitigating this came, and they're, they're a little disappointed that now we're gonna have to wait another at least two weeks to get movement on that. Tree has fallen down in the middle of that, that's actually a liability, so they're gonna be covering the cost to demolish that, which I think we've, we've had this discussion in years past, that most of these properties are beyond, beyond the pale. So, I move, first of all, to anyone that they're, we don't have an issue with tonight, that we put that on the work session, on the, on the voting session next time, to get this moving forward, and get these back on the tax rolls. But second, I wanted to ask Walter, I think, did you bring these up, Walter? These four other items here?
Yeah.
Four or five or whatever? Do you want to speak to those, what your issues were with that? Because I, you know, we've been dealing with property a long time, it's a severe problem in our, in our county, and to think anybody that wants to take some of this on, I mean, my hat's off to them. But we also want to do it right, and want to make sure it's equitable, so go for it, Walter.
May I go ahead, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
The biggest concern that I have, basically, is, and I certainly appreciate this picture, and I certainly think that these type of properties are the type of properties, that if somebody would take it for $1,000 or $500 and rip that eyesore down and clean up the neighborhood, I think that's something we all would be happy about.
I think the municipality is interested in that property.
The municipality wants to take this for a dollar.
Yeah.
Okay? So, the, the biggest issue that I have with the repository properties is the ability for people to get off the hook for the back taxes, that's my big issue. It's not so much selling the property to somebody else. We're losing $80,000 in back taxes on these properties that are on this list today. Now, will we ever get the 80,000? I don't know. Depends on if we, according to the Act 93, we can file a lien against their property. I don't think we can file a lien against them personally for a, for back taxes, but we can, if they have other property, we can lien against those other properties, from what I understand. Obviously, we'd need to get the solicitor to take a look at that. I think we need to do our due diligence to try and get as much money as we can from these delinquent properties, not, not to preclude them from getting sold, but certainly to not let the people who let those properties go into repository off the hook on back taxes that they owe us, as well as school districts and municipalities. We all need money. To lose $80,000 sitting on the table for 19 properties is kind of, you know, without even trying to get the money, I think is, is something that we shouldn't do. We should at least try. If we don't get it, at least we've tried, we filed the liens, and if we get it, that's fine. I think we should not place a number on the property. I think if somebody wants to bid on a repository property, we should send the assessment office out to assess that property, and see if it's worth what they're bidding for. It may be worth more than that, and we don't know that. This property, obviously, is pretty, is in pretty bad shape, and I, I think a lot of them that are in repository are the same. But I just don't want to have us, this $500 number was many, many, many years ago, that was set in place by, I think, county commissioners, that allowed a number of $500, and I think that number, based on the expenses of the county, and all the things, the monies that we have to expend, I think that clearly can go up. I, I don't see any reason why we would not be able to sell a property for $1,000 in this county. If they ripped that house down on that property, somebody bought that, the land alone has got to be worth at least $1,000 if they sell it. So, I think those are the kind of issues that I, I know I brought it up to the real estate committee, and they're gonna look at that, but I think those are the things we need to look at before we just give property away for $500 when there may be property there that could bring more than that. Other, other issue that I have is the written consent for all taxing districts. It clearly says in the law that we're supposed to get written consent from all taxing districts where the property's located. We're not getting that, it's council. We don't see that documentation. My concern is if we sell a property for $500 to somebody in repository, and the school district or the municipality never gave consent to do that, what is going to be the repercussion for that? We need to make sure that we follow the, the statute, get the written consent from the municipality and the school district that said they had a vote of their council or their board, and they said it's okay to sell it, and then we can do that. I, I just, I just don't want to see us end up into a position where somebody buys a piece of property for 500 from the county, and then they come back from the school district and say, well, you had no right to sell that property, we never gave you the permission to do that. So, I, those are some of the issues that I have with the repository property. I certainly don't want to delay the process with properties like this, or other properties or trailers possibly. I think we need to clean up the neighborhoods as best we can, but I think the county also has an obligation to get as much money as we can for these properties, and not just say, well, it's a blanket thing across the board, whatever property is, just bid 500 bucks and go on. Those are my concerns.
No, I, I think we all share those two, Walter, and I, I know that in years past, again, you know, burden hands worth to in the bush, and a lot of these properties, you know, it's, they're all in the bush.
And clearly, and clearly, property's only worth what somebody will buy it for.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if we don't have a buyer for it, it's worth nothing, so I agree with you.
I think, I think your concern is valid, I mean, the bid amount, $500, maybe that's something the real estate committee can take a look at, and take a look at perhaps increasing that minimum bid. I don't know if that would preclude prospective bidders, then at that point, I mean-
Well, you have to realize they already went through-
$500 for a disaster property like that is still a lot of money for a liability.
Property's already went through the sheriff's sale, they already went through the judicial sale, nobody wanted them, so now it's, that's why it came down to that. However, I did write down Walter's concerns, and talked to Ramilda about it, and it's, we're gonna get together probably next week, hopefully get an answer from the Office of Law on those concerns.
Okay, I mean, right now, Mr. Chair, so, I mean, we get these, we get these lists directly from Northeast Revenue, who is, is, is gone, and they've talked to the taxing authorities, right, and they've given their okay. So, by the very nature that it comes to us, means that they have received notification, I'm assuming through written word, but we don't see that, because we're just the council, we're not the, the executive function here. But I know there was a concern, I think, about the $1 properties, and it looks like that's the one that's in question there. I think that was, again, it's cut off.
A government entity could buy it for a dollar.
So, government can, all right, thanks, Leanne. So, again-
Where's that, where's that written?
She said it.
That is not in the real estate law, that they can buy it for a dollar?
I read it somewhere, but I apologize, I don't remember.
Yeah, it's not, that is not in the real estate law.
I don't believe it's in the law, I think that's something that we've, the county has.
Maybe that was an agreement.
Yeah, it says that the taxing body can sell a property for any number they want.
I read that it was the government entity, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
I know that it's, it's what we've done in the past, but as councilperson McDermott has indicated, we are going to review all these issues, including the issue with the municipality. And if we need to ask Northeast Revenue to give us a written verification as to the other public entities' approval, we can get that from them.
I mean, I would just move again, just to restate what I said before, anything that specifically Walter in this case doesn't have issue with, I say we move them and, and say goodbye with these properties next meeting, but are there any, are there specific ones, Walter, you want to still wait to get final word on, or anybody else for that matter?
Well, and one, one of the emails that I sent out was trying to get courthouse online for the members of council, so we could look at these properties. We'd actually get pictures that we got tonight, because we didn't have these pictures before tonight. So, I mean, I could have easily looked at all this and, and gave you an answer to that, but we didn't get that data until tonight. If we would get the courthouse online access, and we could look at those properties that are in repository and say, okay, yeah, these are okay, or at least get pictures and this information that was given, provided to us tonight, that might have been helpful for me to say, okay, just take off number 2, 3, 4, you know, take those off, because I, I have issues with those. We could vote on them separately, but I'm not, I'm not comfortable with assuming that We could vote on them separately, but I'm not comfortable with assuming that Northeast Revenue is doing their due diligence. We know what the history is with Northeast Revenue. We certainly don't want to assume anything there. So, I think what we should do is get them to respond according to the law, and when people buy the property in repository, that they get taxed accordingly. And, you know, that's what they're supposed to do. That's what we pay them for. And we only get a third of that money. So, we're getting two hundred and twenty-some dollars for the sale of a property for five hundred dollars. We don't get the whole five hundred.
And I would also say to... Going back to the Real Estate Committee as well, the big issue I always had is I'm worried about problem out-of-town property owners buying up these properties, and they do absolutely nothing with them.
Exactly.
It's an even worse problem than we had from the get-go, so...
Well, if you read the newspaper this morning, there were a couple that were bought and left idle for several years, and now they're back in the repository.
Happens all the time.
Yep.
So, I mean, and I don't think that's worth the five hundred dollars for going through that extra headache, so... Again, if I...
But we don't get five hundred dollars, just so everybody knows. We don't get that.
Well, I'm just saying, if we're an easy solution, you know, we'd be taken care of, but it's not necessarily easy, so...
We're getting two hundred and fifty bucks or less.
Looking at this list in front of me, I noticed that there were two properties also in a floodplain. I would probably take a look at that because many times, you know, we're looking to buy those properties up and basically knock them down and never have any structure on those in the future. So, what goes to say that somebody buys one in a floodplain and then turns around and gets, like, sells it back to a government entity or gets, you know, grant money and actually makes money on the property through mitigation means? You know, so I don't know if we should really...
You would hope that somehow that would have got picked up in sheriff's sale or the judicial. You would hope, but we certainly could check into it.
But that's a possibility, though, you know?
Yeah, definitely.
If it's alongside the river, somebody buys that property for five hundred dollars and then turns around and resells it for mitigation purposes and makes twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand dollars on it.
Go ahead, Leanne.
I'll add it to my list of questions.
Add it to the list, yes.
And Mr. McGinley, also, I brought this issue up about putting liens on other properties that the people have at the last judicial or repository sale, and it was supposed to get looked in at that point. So, I won't approve anything on a repository list until we get that issue resolved because I'm not... I'm not going to let the taxpayers take the loss for those properties with back taxes if we can't get at least a decision from the Office of Law as to whether we can get those back taxes. Act 93 says we can get it. Now, I don't know what the restrictions are on that, but certainly the Office of Law needs to research that before we give any properties away and let the taxpayers lose that money. Also, and just for the edification of members of council, it also says the county is not responsible for any properties that are in repository. I know that was a misnomer that's come across the council in the past, was if the property's in repository and somebody falls on the sidewalk, they can sue the county. They cannot, according to the real estate law. Says that is the property owner's responsibility. They can... And I know the Office of Law will agree that you could sue anybody for anything, but the law clearly says that the... At the time of property that is taxed delinquent is exposed to but not sold at an upset sale, legal title to the property shall remain with the delinquent property owner until the Bureau transfers the deed or to... As a trustee, grantor, purchaser, or nothing in this act shall be construed to relieve a delinquent property owner of civil or criminal liability or for an obligation for maintenance or for nuisance remediation of a taxed delinquent property. So, the property owner's on the hook for remediation. They're also on the hook for stuff like this. If Newport Township wants to rip this building down, they certainly can and levy a fine against... or a lien against the property owner. So, this gun-to-your-head mentality by the municipality doesn't fly. They can rip this property down and go after the property owner for the money. But I'm willing to help anybody I can to get that off the roll, so...
Councilwoman Griffith is correct. The courts, for years, we were relying on case law, and now it's codified. So, it's clear that it's the property owner that retains the responsibility and liability if there's an issue.
Thank you. We'll have to get some questions answered, and then we'll see what we can move forward to the voting session. Eight and nine have been taken care of, so move down to number ten. Ms. Howke?
Sure. I sent some proposed amendments to the bylaws. So, there... The first one is on page one hundred, and this is a rule regarding telephone, electronic media appearance. And as we discussed, there should not be a reason why someone would be prohibited from attending by telephone. So, right now, the bylaws call for if someone appears by telephone at a meeting more than three times, it has to be approved by a vote of council. I don't think that that is actually how it should be. I don't think the chair has the approval, the right to approve a council member's appearance by telephone. So, the... You can see the amendments that I suggest. So, I removed issues of approval by the chair or requesting permission from the chair with notifying the chair of the need to participate by telephone. And number two, I changed from the council chair may approve to a council member may appear at a council meeting. Number four, a council member's appearance... A telephonic appearance shall only occur. And then on page one oh one, on number eleven, I removed seek permission with note and replaced it with notify and just state the reason for such a request, removing the right of council to approve such an appearance. And then the amendment number two, the other one, actually goes back to what happened at our last meeting with the, you know, multiple seats that were being filled. And so, my suggestion is to add a C on page one oh two to say that in the event that more than one vacancy is to be filled, nominations shall be solicited as set forth. So, in other words, we would do the usual nomination process, and you could nominate people. You could nominate ten people if you want to, but after the nominations are completed, you close nominations, and then you conduct a roll call vote for each seat individually. Instead of naming, you know, like, if you have three seats to be filled, naming... Everybody naming three members, which is where you kind of get into the weeds, and then you get, you know, people who have, you know, maybe four votes or... and a lot of ties in there, you do one seat at a time. So, everybody names their first choice, and then you follow... Just follow the same procedure that you already have in place when there's only one seat to be filled. Then you remove that person from the... Like, the person who's selected from the nominees and go on with the second seat, third seat, fourth seat, however many seats you have to fill. But you do all your nominations at once, and then you do a vote for each seat individually. So, I guess the only thing, and I talked to Mr. DeLuca before, is that I would change it to say a candidate receiving six or more votes in this recall shall be removed from the list of nominees, because if they have six or more, they would... It wouldn't just be six, but six or more in that section. So, those are my suggestions.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith, you have some suggestions?
Yeah, I just have a couple on the page that Sharon was kind enough to pass out to everybody on council. And the question... The concern that I have is what happened this evening about changing our meeting to five thirty. I never did receive an email that we changed the time. The time I realized we were changing it was when we got the agenda. And there are members of this council that actually have jobs and work. I'm retired, so, I mean, I can... I'm pretty flexible with my schedule, but, you know, there will be times in the future, possibly, where we'll have council members that won't have the flexibility to just, at the last minute, tell their boss that Tuesday, I'm not going to be able to be here at five o'clock because I have to go to work or I have to go to a council meeting. And so, I think that we need to change our bylaws to say that each month, number five B, it says, "Public meetings shall normally occur on the second or fourth Tuesday of each of every month at a start time no earlier than six P.M." That's one of the changes that I want to make in Section 5B. And then down in the bottom, it says that the county manager's stated the county address as per the Luzerne County Home Rule Charter shall be given at a regular council meeting no earlier than six P.M. It seems to be a trend that we're getting into is when the county manager has to give his stated the county address, it happens at five thirty. I'm thankful that, you know, the Scott Cannon was able to televise it at five thirty, but I think it's important that we stay consistent so people in the county who may want to attend the meetings or may want to watch it via the Internet or by television, that it's consistent, that every time we have a meeting, they know it's going to be at a certain time. This ability to just move the meeting times around at random because we can, I don't think, is conducive to consistency for the public who has to... May want to attend a meeting. So, I'd like to make that change and say that it's consistent with the charter. The charter just says one meeting a month has to be at six o'clock.
No, it says after six o'clock.
After six o'clock, right. At least one of these meetings shall be scheduled to begin after six P.M.
Yep.
It doesn't mean that we can't have meetings at seven P.M. Doesn't mean we can't have meetings at six fifteen, but it certainly doesn't say that we can have them at five thirty. You can, if you want to. I just don't think that's in the spirit of the charter. The charter specifically says six P.M. because they want to give people a chance to get out of work and come to a public meeting. Home Rule is designed for the public, so we need to keep that into account. We can have our executive sessions whenever we want, but I think six P.M. is a good time to have our meetings for people to attend. And the other change I have is 5D. "As procedure to notice a change of council meeting schedule, the chair, after consulting with all members of county council regarding the availability, may cancel or reschedule a regular council meeting." I just don't feel, whether it's Mr. McGinley or any one of us that are sitting as the chair, should have the ability to just arbitrarily say, "Well, I think we'll have the meeting at five o'clock because we have a lot of things to do." And somebody who has a work schedule has to adjust, and I just don't think that's fair without at least giving us the courtesy of asking us first to say, "I'd like to change it to five o'clock. Are you able to attend?" So, at least we know we have a quorum for a meeting. We would have no way to know that at the last change that happened. And the last change on it was, "Any rescheduled... Any rescheduled regular meeting of council shall be promptly given to all council members no later than seventy-two hours prior to the date of the change." That's pretty much done when we get the agenda. Everybody knows that there's been a change, a rescheduling when we get the agenda. That's how we all knew that this meeting was changed, was because we got the agenda that said that the voting session was at five thirty. Otherwise, we'd have no way to know that, because I didn't get an email. I don't know if anybody else got one. I may not be on the handshake list here because I haven't been on the handshake list for years.
Who was on the handshake list?
But I'm going to tell you, I did not get one. I did not get one, so...
Okay. I don't know that list, but if you could tell me who was on it, I'd appreciate it.
I'd like to know myself, because I didn't get one. So, did you send out an email to anybody else?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, then, everybody else didn't know.
There's no handshake list, Mr. Griffith, even though you may think there is.
I'm pretty sure there is. Mr. McGinn.
My suggestion is we have a committee to review these and bring them back to council since Ms. Howke and Mr. Griffith and myself are on... With Ms. Radel are on the budget finance. We have a meeting on Thursday. Maybe we can piggyback a meeting after on the bylaws so that we can have it prepared.
I'd like to make a mention, too, regarding nominations. Sometimes you have multiple individuals. What I noticed, too, at the prior meeting was that we did not actually expressly state which open position they're in. So, sometimes you have a resignation where the term is different than what's stated on the website, so we want to be...
The terms are listed.
Well, I don't think we voted on them explicitly for each person.
Yeah, the terms... The finished date of the term was listed.
No, but before you vote on it, because if you choose to have one person, A, go to the end of 2019, and person B to go to the end of 2020 or 2020, 2021, I mean, that has to be stated.
Yeah, but I don't think there was any at this meeting, the prior meeting, not this meeting, that that was the case.
Well, I think...
I'd have to look closely, but I don't believe it was the case.
The Alex Malanis appointment, there are two different dates available based on what's on the county website, so just so we don't get caught. You know, it might not have occurred at this particular time, but if somebody resigns, you know, and you go and fill a position...
Somebody resigns, we bring that to council and put her to vacation.
Right, but at the beginning of the year, we had so many of them done, you know, last meeting, you know, save, for instance, there was a resignation of an individual that... Where their term wasn't matching the other two or three individuals, you know, you have to state that term.
Can I?
Yes, Ms. Radel.
I'm not on the bylaw of a code review committee. I just, with Mr. Griffith's motion to change the bylaws here on 5B, I would just suggest that, just to be cohesive with the charter, rather than saying time no earlier than six, maybe we just said after six, because I know the charter says after six. I know it's a minute, and it's kind of silly, but just so it looks like everything matches. Maybe if we just reworded it?
I can make that change. That's not a problem.
Okay. Will we on to the administrative code revisions?
Okay. We can take a little bite of it again, I guess.
Well...
Or do you want to wait?
I was hopeful that we could schedule a meeting of the committee, go over everything and make sure we get everything, because we have a lot of work to do there. I think Mr. Griffith, the one email I saw, I think he's right. There's a lot of work to be done there.
Okay.
So, if we could get a meeting, I know it's been... Tried to get the meetings together, but we get that meeting going, and then we can bring back us something that we're ready to work with.
Okay. I believe we have a date of March tenth at five.
Excuse me?
We have March tenth at five.
March tenth. The problem is that, you know, tonight, we don't know what we're going to have as possible executive session. That's the problem. I was hopeful that we may have something coming back from the legal person who we sent information to regarding the stormwater fee. And if that comes back, that's a potential executive session, so...
Well, then, we can start at four thirty if that happens.
Yeah, that would be all right with me.
Okay.
Is there a way we can make the meeting another night?
I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, I just, you know, as a... Something as important as revising codes takes a lot of time. I would rather be able to dedicate the time that we need to do that as opposed to jamming it into a voting session night. And I know it's difficult to go out another night. Everybody has lives, and we all have things that we want to be doing besides sitting here. But I think if we make it four thirty, we may not have enough time to get the work done if there's an executive session scheduled or... We don't know what's going to happen, and to schedule any meeting on the night of a council meeting...
I might just... I think you have to talk, you know, the committee members make that decision.
I'm just stating my opinion, Mr. McGinley.
I understand.
Right, and I understand that. I... My first availability is actually March tenth, but I would also say that we don't start thinking about the changes that we make when we get to the meeting. So, an awful lot of the work, like the amendments that I propose, I send out to people so that they can think about them, and then we can just have a discussion. So, I'd appreciate if we could give it a start on March tenth, and then if we, you know, if we need to allocate more time, I'll see what I could do in the next few weeks after that.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that, too.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Haas?
Yes, sir. If you look at your packet, council, pages one seventy-one to one seventy-eight, what this is, is a draft of the letter to President Trump that this council voted on two weeks prior, actually, I guess, a month ago at this point, and that was remanded to the Legislative Committee for some action. I'm going to report on the committee and just a couple of agenda items there, but suffice it to say, we had a two-hour meeting on the eighteenth of February, and just because it was such a great turnout, we had about eight people in attendance, want to make sure that we heard from everybody as much as possible and did not get a chance to take a look at Walter's draft there. So, that's what we're doing as a council at large. The committee itself did not move it. As chairman, I thought this was prudent to get it out here so we could actually get movement on it in two weeks' time and really vote to get things moving, because the longer we delay, the more people are going to face ominous fate. So, when you look at one seventy-one through one seventy-four, a lot of the letter, Walter paraphrased, from Dr. Paula Dora's letter that you all received also a few weeks ago, which was exquisitely written. We all just really appreciate him and what the Butler Township supervisors did. So, talking with Walter and run it by him first, I just made some very brief but sweeping edits there, and just to format the letter a little bit on page one seventy-five and to get rid of the meat of the letter, which is all of page one seventy-six and one seventy-seven and a small chunk there on one seventy-five, and then at the end, the last page there, except for the conclusion. And then, of course, we'll do some formatting and editing. But essentially, as we envision this and we talk to the people, we just want to get the letter to the president. He has the authority. He can rescind an executive order from a prior administration, and that would make a lot of problems go away. And if we could get his attention in a very succinct way, but also thinking that we included the Butler Township letter in that packet, because that really lays out the nice narrative, and also talking with the taxpayer power folks, specifically Mike Stash, he wrote a very beautifully written letter as well that dealt with a little more of the passions that we're dealing with here at the local level. So, the idea is to send our cover... Essentially, a cover letter. Dear Mr. President, basically, please rescind executive order, whatever the number is off hand, thirteen, five, zero, eight, and see the attached letters that a local township has made the case, as well as our local taxpayer group. And I think, just as the committee chair, and I'd welcome Walter and Steve's opinion on this, I think that, speaking again just for myself, there's pretty broad consensus. We just want to move this forward, deliver the pizza, and move on our way. So, I don't know, gentlemen, anything to add there?
Just, I was thinking about this, too, over a little bit of time. How about we also send a copy to the Vice President, President or Vice President Pence as well? Carbon copy him. I mean, because he's been in this area, too, numerous times, and he has a little bit more time, so maybe he can also get the president's ear.
I think, um.
Yeah, I mean, any, any outlet would, just CC him on it, or?
I think the resolution includes, uh, I, I forget exactly what it said offhand, but the Director of EPA, Valley Sanitary Authority, a couple other entities, too, I think it's just the council's pleasure who we send it to, so I don't have a problem with that.
So, are you going to send a cleaned up document with the revisions that you suggested?
Absolutely, if it's all right with my committee members.
Yep. Mr. McGinley, if I could add, I just want to make, make note for the record that, first of all, we want to thank Mr. Genetti for allowing us to use his facility for the meeting, was very, very helpful for us to have the space and, and to set that up for, for the people could attend that stormwater meeting. Secondly, I want to thank the representatives that came, I mean, it take, it took time for Eddie Day Pachinsky, State Representative Pachinsky, State Representative Aaron Koffer, and Karen Boback, and the gentleman from, uh, Mr. Zimmerman from the 99th District attended, as well as Congressman Dan Muser attended, and it was very, very informative for the people, and it gave them an opportunity to speak to their representatives one-on-one about the things that are important to them, which is the fee that they have to pay for stormwater. So, I want to make sure that it's in the record that we thank Mr. Genetti for that, as well as the representatives. We did reach out for somebody for March, for the March meeting, to Mr. Cartwright and a couple of the other representatives as well, and, uh, it, it, I thought it was a very productive meeting.
Can I just report now to Mr. Chair, can we just, excuse me, I mean, it's later on the agenda, can we just talk about it now?
What's that?
With the, uh, the real, the report of the committees.
Uh, let's wait till we get, we'll run through them, please.
Fair enough.
Okay. Very good. Will we down to number 13, Mr. Vog?
Yes, so, the ordinance in front of you, County Council, tonight is for the creation of the County Cares Commission. Uh, I'll just quickly read the goals. The goals of the County Cares Commission will be to work with the Legislative Committee to identify grant opportunities and secure such grants, work with the Human Services Departments to host public education forums, and work with local nonprofit organizations to collaborate in reducing the stigma of substance abuse, highlight success stories, and provide community outreach programs to help Luzerne County Council, or Luzerne County citizens in need. So, for the past year, I've been doing that on my own, outside of County Council. I spent a lot of time in the community, working with those dealing with substance use disorder and those in the recovery community, um, and so I, my thoughts behind this is, I, I feel like I've done a lot, um, and I will keep doing it, but I think it means more coming from the county, um, and we have a little bit more pool than County Councilman Matt Vog does, so, uh, that's behind the creation of this. Obviously, they'll work in conjunction with many other boards, but also the Mental Health Board, because we all know that's very closely related. I just think that there's a serious need for this out in the community, and it shows that the county cares about this issue, uh, right, right, right at this moment. Is there any questions?
I just, you know, I had, um, sent an email out, too, and I, you know, and in my opinion, I think mental health should also be part of this, not just drug and alcohol related, because I think if you, like I said in the past, peel the onion back a little bit, uh, sometimes those are byproducts of having mental health issues, so I think, you know, would have even more teeth to, to add, um, mental health in here and get those people engaged as well.
Okay.
And I'm glad to, you know, help out with this as well.
Yeah, I'll, and I'll make those adjustments to the ordinance.
I'm sure Chris, I think, you know.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I was going to say to Mr. Yama, as a Chair of the Legislative Committee, we've talked about this in years past, have to help out and support, thanks for what you do.
All right, thank you.
It's really good.
Okay.
The only thing I need to, I know this is a well-intentioned ordinance, and I think it's, if we could get it, get it to work to make people's lives better, it's been, it's going to be wonderful, I would just caution us to make sure that we don't overlap into the drug and alcohol, and possibly go into the executive branch to start micromanaging or doing, interfering with day-to-day operations, those type of things that, you know, were precluded from in the charter to do.
And it'll be reviewed by the Office of Law, make sure we do not have any charter revision.
Because it's a council committee, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Yep.
Correct. Okay. Will we down to the committee reports, Mr. Vog?
Yes, so, Act 13 Grant Committee, we have not met yet, but we will pick a day to review the application process, uh, we did redo the application last year, so I think the first meeting will just be welcoming the new members and kind of walking them through the process. Uh, we're expecting funding around mid-year, June, July, so we'll meet before then, finalize the application, and then once funds come in, we'll meet again to distribute them.
Mr. Perry, Authority Boards and Commissions?
Well, we had two meetings, uh, January 28th and February 6th, we interviewed 48 candidates for the ABCs. Uh, we don't have a committee's meeting scheduled yet, but I would think by the end of, uh, March, beginning of April, uh, we'll, we'll have another one. Mr. Grossman, um, had emailed me, he has an interest in discussing, uh, having a Luzerne County Arts Advisory Board, if you recall, he talked to us, I believe, two years in a row, Pittston, he's, he's well-versed in it, and, uh, he has a lot of good things to say, so we'll meet with him at our next meeting, and then we'll make sure he comes to a work session to speak to council.
Thank you. Budget, Finance, and Audit, we have a meeting scheduled on Thursday at 4:45. One of the topics will be for the RFP for new auditing services, and also then we will talk about the beginning of the audit process, with the Budget and Finance Department, see what our first steps have been and what our schedule will be going forward. Mr. Haas?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, as, as I said before, the Legislative Committee at Genetti's, Tuesday, February 18th, 4:00 to 6:00, and, um, I also want to thank somebody who wasn't mentioned, is Walter Griffith, for really putting that together, Walter, and doing a lot of legwork and communicating, again, thank you publicly.
My pleasure.
Um, we just, we just want to make sure that, that any, any politician that couldn't make it, that they can come out, because again, this is an all-hands-on-deck, be fair to anybody who wasn't able to come from our delegation, and we'll be looking at that. Hopefully, I mean, in March, uh, to lock down a date is going to be contingent on a lot of other people's schedules, and, um, I, I don't want to just be redundant and repeat the same things at the next meeting, but again, I want to make sure we can get as much buy-in as possible, and, um, want to thank, thank the Taxpayer Power Group also for coming out and attendance, thank you, everybody, for what you said and your opinion on behalf of a lot of people who weren't able to make it. We had about 80 people come out, best I could count, and, uh, just like Walter was saying earlier, we had a lot of representatives from our delegation, Representative Pachinsky, Boback, Koffer, um, there were representatives from Tara Toohill there, um, from Mr. David Zimmerman, representative out of Lancaster County, as well as representatives from Senator Deitch's office, Senator Baker's office, and US Representative Dan Muser, all made it. Again, and just because they came does not mean that other people did not want to come, just want to make that very clear, so, we won't open that up to other people. The biggest takeaway that, that I personally had there is that the executive order enabled the EPA to, to institute these restrictions on us, but it really comes down to the Pennsylvania DEP and the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority that has kind of upped the ante, so to speak, and really, um, been more restrictive than, than even the, the national organization, so, um, uh, the discussion was, how can we prevent this on a lot of different levels from a lot of different representatives that we had out there, and I'm going to, I'm just paraphrasing very broadly, just to keep all of you members here appraised of it, but, um, I, I thought it was helpful, and we tried to keep the, the comments to, to really specific questions or suggestions about how we contend with this, and I think the people were really wonderful out there in the crowd. I know, uh, Representative Boback brought up House Bill 781, which would enable, talk about, Matt was just talking about the, um, Marcellus, Marcellus funding, that we, that would be an acceptable use to pay down the, the county portion of the rain tax, but, again, we, I think the general consensus, again, was, either way, it's still out there, it's still hurting people, it's still hurting our local government as well, because that's less fun, it's going to be programmed for other things, so, um, I think it's just all the more incumbent that we get this letter out to the President and hopefully get his attention, um, in the weeks ahead, I think that's all I have to, to really point that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. McDermott, Real Estate?
Yes, we had our meeting on, um, last Thursday, I think I was right, and, um, we did have Brian Foy from the Sheriff's Department, Sean Shimani from Northeast Revenue, and Sam Falcone, which is their solicitor, uh, come and explain the differences between the sheriff judicial and repository sales, and, um, we did, um, express the, the purpose of the committee, the purpose is to address any real estate issues and research them before it does go, uh, before council. One of the things, um, definitely with the pictures, they're a help, and I know we'll try to get those in there sooner next time. Flower tent, we spoke about that, and, of course, we're going to settle that in a future meeting, um, and then, of course, now we have six questions that we have to get together with the Office of Law and try to come up with those answers, we're going to meet, Ramil and I are planning a meeting next week, and we don't have our committee meeting set until after that.
Thank you. Ms. Hauck?
Strategic Initiatives, uh, we don't have any meetings scheduled, and, uh, I understand Ms. Siedman is replacing Mr. Perry now.
Cat?
Code Review, as I mentioned before, we'll have a meeting on March 10th.
4:30, right?
Uh, yeah, 4:30.
4:30. Down to Council Relay Committees, Mr. Haas?
Yeah, Council Committee for Blighted Properties, uh, we're going to meet, per the bylaws, March 23rd at 5:00 PM, we will have a full complement of members to move that forward, thank you.
Okay. Riverfront Parks Committee, they're meeting this, this evening, I got an email, obviously, I'm here and there someplace else, so I can't report on their meeting, and the Plains Township Tiff, I have not received any further information, uh, I don't know where they stand at this point, uh, hopefully, we'll be getting some communication so that we can bring it back to the council. Work session. Mr. Manta?
Before a public comment, I have a couple items.
Oh, you.
At the next opportune moment, could we get the Ace Commission Committee Chairman to up, report to a work session or a voting session?
Sure.
And could we also get Maverick Strategies to come in, their contract is due to be renewed, I'd like to have them come into council and report on what they're doing for their money, that they get paid every month? For Maverick Strategies?
I don't, I thought their contract was the middle of the year.
Well, they've already renewed it on the contract site, but.
They renewed it, a year after.
But it doesn't expire, so we need to get them in to discuss with them what they're, what they're doing for council for that money they're getting every month?
Okay.
And, and lastly, the last question I have for you is, how do we, how do we fix this? Can we tell Sharon not to make these for me, at least? I mean, this is a real crime.
Now Chuck, do your, if you don't need to have them, that's fine, but we will provide them for anybody.
It's an awful lot of paper we're throwing away every, every two weeks.
I understand that, but we don't want anybody to not have what they need when they come to meetings.
I don't know if we can get used laptops for members of council to use and save the paper, but.
Well, that's a budget item that we'll talk about in October.
That's a whole, that's a whole ream of paper there, just for one member, that's a real, you know, cost savings.
Mr. Manta?
I guess I was done, Mr. Manta, go ahead.
Okay, uh, on the items that Mr. Haas discussed about the meeting, I, I'd like to, I'd like to comment on those items, uh, I think, at this time, Mr. McGinley, uh, I think that, as a County Council, we should thank all the members that did come as, to represent and to help us with this, all the members that Walter mentioned, from state representatives to local representatives, and to go a little bit further, I think at this point, right now, I'd like to thank personally, Mr. Haas, Mr. Griffin, and Mr. Urban, for organizing this whole thing to get it, to get something done for the taxpayers, we the people, you got to remember that, we're the people, let's say, in a chablot way, we're paying for you guys to do the job, but yet, we as a taxpayers' association, all right, we as a taxpayers', taxpayers' power, we don't get paid a dime, okay? Not that I want any money, I want to fight for people that can't fight for themselves, and you people are helping us to get this fight done, so, by, by you people helping us, we should thank the people in public, these three gentlemen, for getting this done for us as taxpayers, and also, Mr. Urban had a great idea, that there should be a CC copy sent to the, the Vice President, and, and also, the rest of the people in, in the Congress and Senate, only takes a, an email to send them a, a copy of what's going on here, and maybe we'll get somebody to say, "Stop the rainwater tax." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rabel.
First of all, I'd like to thank also Mr. Haas, Mr. Urban, and Mr. Griffith for the, arranging the Legislative Committee meeting in Genetti's with the state representatives and Congressman Muser with regards to, uh, rainwater tax. I would like to, and, you know, it pains me because I'm against the rainwater tax/stormwater fee, I've been dealing with this since 2014, um, to cancel, for, a president can cancel out a previous president's executive order, that's, you know, everyone knows that, but the mandate for the MS4 came from a court order, not from an executive order, so, and it was also solidified by four agreements, the first of which was 1983 with the Chesapeake Bay Group and six states surrounding the bay and the EPA. That's where the problem is, those four agreements, the last agreement was 2014, which included New York and the state of Maryland, so that's why New York is involved, because they, they're kind of in the watershed, and they know that they have to, they're responsible for maintaining their pollutant levels as well, so, I think what needs to happen is, and I mentioned this to solicitor, that has to be explored as part of this, not just the 2008 or 2009 Obama executive order. I would also like to comment on what, uh, for the real estate, uh, repository properties, I think what needs to happen is, is since all of you have seen pictures and also, uh, other properties within a repository over years, we all know that they're either, something's wrong with the properties, like something, you know, either a, a fraction of them or most of them, and they're allowed to go into deteriorated, you know, deteriorated condition. I think, as Mr. Griffith pointed out, as far as with them going into delinquent status with the taxation, I think what needs to happen is, it needs to be part and parcel with the blighted property process, because as, uh, Mr. Haas can tell you, uh, it is also with respect to the Blighted Property Committee, that once a property is certified as a blighted property, any delinquency for delinquent taxes can be attached to that property, once it's deemed legally certified as a blighted property. So, that is why, when we advocate, when I came in front of you before, and Mr. Haas came, uh, and advocated for this, uh, that's one of the reasons why the Blighted Property Committee was needed, was for this purpose, so that way, any revenue, any kind of tax delinquency can be brought back to this county as revenue, that's what is needed, so, uh, I would like for you guys to explore that, and as far as strategic initiatives go, I think that needs to be used, uh, one of the goals should be to explore capital funding mechanisms and also work with our state legislators to get capital funding. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? So, Dwyer first?
I have a question for Mr. Rabel, he probably ought to be answering.
Well, let's get Mr. Dwyer and Mr. Newman, now, go ahead. We're going to be here for a little bit, so, we'll get this answered for you.
I, I didn't intend to speak, I just was hanging out, it's fine.
Okay.
You've all, you've all heard me stand up and say, "I don't have another $5," um, and, and the one thing I got, and I really do, is sincerely hopes that this ties some of this together for you guys, because apparently, Ms. McDermott is on the Real Estate Committee? Is that, am I correct?
She's the Chairman of the Real Estate.
Okay, okay, yes, Chairman, um, and, uh, the one thing I got, and, and the gentleman on council that were at the, the meeting on the 15th, I was shocked when the federal Congressman, Dan Muser, said, "They're still looking at this area for the acid mine water, they want a billion dollars a year." So, how does this tie in? Walter says, you know, "We can't sell the property for 500 bucks, because you could tear the house down and the lot's worth a thousand dollars." I, I don't disagree with that point of view, however, it's a white elephant, I, I have the cash, I could buy a lot of those properties, I wouldn't, because I don't have the money for the, the fee they're going to start charging for the acid mine water, that's why you see some of these properties, five or seven years later, nothing happens and they end up back on the rolls, you know, it's, it's, it's a thousand dollars for the piece of land, but it's 15,000 dollars for the permits and a demolition cost, you're, you're in the hole, like, there's no, and I, I said at that meeting, if something isn't done to address not just the rainwater issue, but, but the other things that, that you guys have talked about on your committees and whatnot, this is all circular, it all ties together, this place is going to turn into the next Detroit, we have no manufacturing base on a large scale in this area, you know, we got a bunch of restaurants in KOZ zones up at the mall, that's circular economy and it just leaves, goes back to corporate offices, they pay people 10 bucks an hour plus tips, that's not a living wage, so where, where would people get the money to come to this body and, and buy a property at a free and clear sale for 500 bucks, and then, and then what, stick 3,500 dollars into it, or, I'm sorry, 35,000 dollars into it, and you, you think you can collect the rent, but then all these fees start adding in? I have a property in Larksville, and council has more than my permission to look it up on a tax rolls, it's 82 East Broadway Street, I bought it for 21,000 10 years ago, I keep a, a file in my computer for all my properties, that property, not counting gas or electric or water, just the required government fees, is 7,500 dollars a year to have it, so in three years, it costs me more to have it than I paid for it, the county assesses it at 42,000, that's a whole other argument, we're not going there, but my point is, if you take 7,500 dollars a year and divide that by 12 months in a year, that's where the rent starts, that's 625 dollars a month, the part of Larksville I live in is in the Plymouth zip code, I can't get 625 a month, so now you see where the repository comes from, not that I would do that, but you could see how that leads to that, and then you start throwing on fees that weren't predicted, who could predict tax on rain when I bought that house 10 years ago? That house was part of my retirement plan, now, it's a loser, and I can't get rid of it, because every time I put it on the open market, oh, well, it's a half a lot, it's 1,200 square feet, yeah, you got a little garage, it's kind of cute, but there's a very small part of the real estate market looking for that, I get offers 18,000, 21,000, and I, I. I get offers $18,000, $21,000, and I thought the realtor was joking, and she pulled 10 comps, five of them were in Larksville. That's what they're selling for. I can't even break even on it, let alone the money I stuck into it to keep it off the blighted property list. So, you're welcome, but we gotta do something about this.
Okay. Mr. Newman?
First of all, I want to thank you all and congratulate you. This is my third time at the mic, and it's only 5 after 9:00. Good job!
We hope that continues, Mr. Newman.
Good job, okay. I want to just mention a few things about what I'm calling tangibles, tangibles. Something that the taxpayer, the folks, can see and don't question what it costs. And the courthouse, the courthouse. It's a pleasure to come into this building and to see the history of Luzerne County, and even to have somebody explain to you, take you through and explain what everything is about. And, yeah, it costs money, but nobody's complaining about it, at least I don't think they are. Secondly...
You haven't been here for some of those discussions, Mr....
Well, you know, generally, let me say generally. I mean, you can please some of the people some of the time, and all of the people some of the time, but you can't please all the people all the time, so we understand that. Mr. Pedry mentioned something, great tangible, the rock concert, everybody enjoyed it. Costs some money, but it's giving the folks something. To Matthew Vog, good job. You're giving the county something that they need, something that's really needed. I don't understand all of it, but what I read in the paper this morning, you're to be congratulated, because it's something that's needed. And then finally, the rain tax efforts. I've written several letters, and I haven't got any responses to either one of them. Now, I would be happy to send a letter in to the county if you think it's advisable on what my position is. And I'm gonna eliminate the John Roberts Supreme Court issue, but the impact that it's having on Luzerne County economically, economically. It's inflationary, it's everything that Karen Boback said at the meeting. Question I have for you, the meeting for March 17th is still on?
I don't think it's gonna work out for that one, gentlemen.
Okay, all right. When is your next work session?
It's to be announced, we're still trying to...
To be announced, please let me know, because I have some ideas. All right, thank you very much.
There's somebody else? Yes, Mr. Knapp?
Yes, I wanted to thank Councilman Griffith, Councilman Urban, and Councilman Haas in moving this forward. For the taxpayer, myself, it's great that we have some, what could be a positive outcome. I gotta be honest, it doesn't look like Wyoming Valley Sanitary takes this lightly, and it appears as though they're standing their ground and they're buying property, I guess, on Santui Highway to advance their objective here, to continue this. And it requires some powerful people to eliminate this, I understand that. And I thank the whole council for unanimously moving this forward. And I stand here just as a taxpayer, and the people that I came here to represent, 46 signatures in regards to the absentee landlords and the lactated conditions they become, because they don't have proper management, they just rent them out to whoever they want. And that really brings the neighborhoods down and the values of our properties that own locally here. So that was my main cause here, is to clean up the neighborhoods and to hopefully see an end to this rain tax, because if it doesn't stop here, as it was stated, the mine water has not been issued on us yet, it has not been implemented on us. So if it doesn't stop here, if the buck doesn't stop here, my lord, you know, if we have to start paying for mine water discharge and such, we're gonna end up with more locals having to sell out, because they can't make their taxes, or pay their taxes or fees. And that's why I'm participating in the meetings from here on out. That's because I feel it's a necessity to hold the council members accountable for what you're doing for the taxpayers. You have to do your due diligence and keep a lid on things, and we have to try to find ways of making ends meet, as opposed to just keep going to the cash cow, cash cow. And it's not gonna pan out for anybody if we continue down the path we are. So thank you again, Council Haas, Councilman Haas, Councilman Griffith, Councilman Urban, for your participation with us.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have one question.
Question?
I was talking with Mr. Snee, and I brought up about the Koz. You know, with the Koz, there's a lot of industry that comes in, and any time when there's taxes raised in the school districts or in the county, the taxpayer pays the bulk of the tax. They gotta go to the little guy with the house. Well, my question is, I think that they need to change with the Koz, they shouldn't get a 10-year anticipated note, they're tax-free for 10 years. The thing is that, if they do come in for 10 years, and they take a piece of valuable real estate in the county, and the county's not getting any taxes off them for 10 years, the school district and so forth, that it needs to be changed. First of all, if they come in for five years, they get a tax-free note, but they have to stay for the next five years and pay taxes, not fold up at the end of the 10 years and then leave to go to another state and look for another better deal. That has to change, because most of the time, it's hurting the county, it's hurting the taxpayers in the county, it's hurting the school districts. Even the districts are seeing now, like I could tell up in Pittston area, a lot of the industry are coming, they're getting now, their contracts are coming up with the lira at the end of their 10-year. Now, they're trying to peel this, so the school district hired a lawyer on retainer to fight them, so that they don't try to not pay taxes again. It's a frustrating process, but I think that you guys should look at down in the future, maybe you could do something, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but giving out valuable land, and I know that most of the businesses that belong to the industry, to the industrial park, you know, they're all within each other, they're like a whole group there. They like to keep the wage down, they like to keep warehouse jobs, I get it. They don't like to keep high-paying, competitive jobs coming in. But they're using valuable land, and then they're getting away without paying taxes. That needs to be changed. Maybe you guys could look down the future and bring something up about it, because I know all the school districts would favor to what you guys, what I'm saying. If you guys could come as a whole body and fight this, you know, and I know the higher politicians don't, they like it, because, you know, they're saying they're bringing jobs in, but in effect, people are losing out in the long run. Yeah, they're low-paying, $10, $11 an hour jobs, but when it comes to the taxes, the little guy's picking up that fair share. That's why the Koz needs to be changed. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Snee?
I have to talk.
Okay. Anyone else?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman?
Got it. Second?
Second.
Mr. Vog? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We approve...
We have...